Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:06. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight and apologize we're starting a little late. Our executive session tonight ran a few minutes late. Is there a motion tonight to seal the executive session minutes from tonight?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes five zero, and we did not take any votes tonight in executive session. And moving to one of my favorite parts of the meeting all the time, we're going to move right to our showcase and let Dr. Cummings do introductions.
Terrific. So let me call up to the mic our assistant principal Connor McCluskey of Narragansett High School. And Connor is going to talk a little bit about our newest approved career and technical education program, sports medicine. And so Connor and the faculty at the high school worked with RIDE to get this approved. So Connor, take it away.
Good evening. Good to see everybody.
Yes.
All right, cool. I meant it the first time, too. So this past December, we had our newest CTE program, sports medicine and athletic training approved. So what I want to do is just walk you through our timeline for creating that, the people who we worked with to do it, the scope and sequence of the courses, the certifications and work-based learning opportunities that students will be able to achieve, and then what the current program enrollment looks like for next year, and then next steps with the program. So in the spring of 2024, so last year, our athletic director Matt Marr and the head of physical therapy at University Orthopedics, Dave Pizzullo, who's a Narragansett graduate, were having a conversation, I believe, over pickleball about athletic training and basically the job needs of university orthopedics and how Dave needed more people basically to help out around the office and get into the profession. Through that, Matt brought a conversation to me and Chris about that, and we looked into the opportunity to make it a CTE program. There's a lot of like backwork that goes into that. So from spring to November, me, Chris, and John O'Brien, our PBGR coordinator at the high school, we're looking at the current approved standards. The application was due on November 4th. We turned in the application to the state on time. And then on November 11th, there was a career and tech board of trustees meeting where they approved a new standard for sports medicine. So just by happenstance, we had submitted an application that fell in line with what the newest state standard was. Come December, we got the notice from RIDE that the program had been approved. And then as of last week, January 17th, we've accepted our first out-of-district student into the program. So key people for this program, I already mentioned Dave, but he is the director of physical therapy at University Orthopedics. He's also the head physical therapist and assistant athletic trainer for the Providence Bruins, as well as a Narragansett High School graduate. He didn't want me to put the year he graduated in there. Kate Wilks is our new athletic trainer at the high school. She was at South Kingstown High School before being employed by us. And then she worked with Dave at University Orthopedics. Then Anthony Hassel is a physical educator who's currently at the high school, but he has worked at the middle school and elementary school level. And he has an undergraduate in kinesiology from URI. There's a minimum course sequence in state CTE programs of three courses. Ours has four courses. Three of those courses are new courses and one is existing. So the first course that they would take would be foundations in healthcare professions and essential healthcare practices. The second course would be sports medicine and athletic training one. The third course, which is our already existing course, is anatomy and physiology that's taught at the high school by Eric Zabel. And then the fourth and final course would be sports medicine and athletic training two. Certifications that will be available to students through this program are first aid CPR and AED training. They will take a precision exam in sports medicine. And then we have to pick through these last certifications, which I'll talk about the process for how we're going to select them. But there's a number of them that we have to go through. We're going to work with Dave and Kate and pick the one that matches our program best. For work-based learning opportunities, we are going to have an industry project. So all students who are involved in this program have to do a project on physical therapy or sports medicine for their senior project requirement. For school-based enterprises, the students are going to work with the high school and middle school athletic departments and athletic teams and prepping bags and working with the sports teams. And then there will be an apprenticeship or internship partnership with University Orthopedics. So we'll have some off-site time doing that. Potential occupations that we're looking for people to be interested in who are participating in this, physical therapist, assistant or aide, physical education teacher, personal fitness trainer, group fitness instructor, strength and conditioning coach, athletic coach, or athletic official. So we're in the middle of the scheduling process at the high school right now. And just with our internal scheduling, we already have 40 internal signups for our first class, which is way higher than anticipated, particularly because the course was, or the program was just approved in December. And then as I previously mentioned, out-of-district students, we just accepted our first. And the application is open through March 1st, and we're expecting more applicants after our open house on February 5th. As far as next steps go for the program, Anthony and Kate are going to be working this summer in the Curriculum Academy to further develop the curriculum and create assessments. Next month, we're going to be meeting with the local CTE advisory board. And through that work, Dave and Kate are going to work with Anthony to pick which industry partners to work with, which work-based learning activities to do, and which physical fitness training certificate best matches our program and the curriculum they want to create. And then finally, for Chris and I and Matt at the high school, we're looking at spaces in the high school and reallocating resources so that the program has everything it needs, particularly the space for students to get to work and to learn how to tape and do those kinds of things. That is all I had for the program so far. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a comment and then just a couple of quick questions. So comment, wow. Like I think this is really interesting and really innovative and had a very quick turnaround. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
And all the people that helped to submit that application and get it approved so quickly. Questions are, are we the first district to launch this CTE program?
As far as I know, I know that Pontagansett in Foster-Glosser was working on it. I believe that they also got it approved because their staff was like working on the standard. So I'm pretty sure there's.
The CTE program didn't exist in any school last year.
It did not exist in any school as of November.
Or this current year, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, cool. And then my last question is for that entry-level course, is that kind of limited to freshmen and sophomores? Or could an upperclassman take it if they obviously aren't doing the CTE pathway, but they just have an interest in it as an elective? So did you kind of say this is for freshmen and sophomores only, or is it kind of flexible while the kids are doing their course requests? while the kids are doing their course request and you're trying to figure out?
No, so the course is open to any student, particularly Narragansett students that would take it.
Okay.
In theory, once we get all four courses running in a year, it will be predominantly ninth and 10th graders. But to get the course off the ground and to generate some buzz and let students get into it, it's open to anybody.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from any committee members? Diane?
I just wanted to comment to say, you know, thank you for the presentation, and this is very exciting. It's great that we can keep expanding the access our students have to various paths of education. And 40 students signing up for a brand-new program is absolutely great news.
Yeah, and we're very excited that it like fills in like an organic, or something that came up organically in the community and really fills a need for a local business, too.
I was just curious, do you foresee articulation agreements with any of our post-secondary schools as part of the program as we go forward?
So hopefully, that's one of the things we're going to work on at the local advisory board with Dave. CCRI currently has something on the table, but we have to like work through the state standard of that. So and I believe URI is something we want to work with because they're so close, but as of right now, we've only talked to CCRI.
And this is area of unidentified area of need. It is a space where there are non-need workers in the state, and so that's part of why the CTE Board approved it so quickly, is that there is not a pipeline to get students into this profession.
Any other questions or comments from any school committee members? Okay. Well, thank you very much for that very exciting update and presentation. It's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay. All right, hearing none. We're going to move on to oral reports, and we're going to start with the Student Liaison Report. Marco.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy New Year to all of you. I hope you all had a restful, happy, and enjoyable holiday vacation. We're officially in 2025. It's very hard to believe that I'll be graduating in a few months. It's honestly mind-blowing, so I'm really looking forward to continuing to be up here representing the student perspective, and it's been great so far. Hope to keep it going. So at the high school, a couple of things going on, nothing too much. We recently just finished our midterm exams, which ran from the 16th to the 21st. So this past Thursday to Tuesday, we took exams in English, science, history, world language, and mathematics classes, not elective blocks, which we've done in years past. English classes did take the mid-year IXL diagnostic during their exam block. Because every English class completed a test and writing assessment together, that combined for that exam grade. So instead of a traditional multiple-choice exam, it would be like a reading and maybe some questions on that reading, and then an open-ended question. Or I know for grade 12, it was an essay combined with that as well. So they were all different, some multiple-choice, some open-ended. I found that this year, the exam period was a little less stressful than years past, just because it was only those core classes we had exams in. Few things going on, the yearbook club, we've been working very diligently putting together the 2025 yearbook. The yearbook club and Journalism II class actually has helped out with this process. We have designed a couple of cover ideas for the cover page that we're looking at. There's a few different ideas and options that we're looking through for what we want to do for the yearbook. Senior portraits, quotes, baby photos have been sent in, and that will be the first part of the yearbook that we're putting together, starting to put together those pieces. This year, something I was thinking of actually is if you guys are interested, and if you're not, no worries, but we would love to include our administration and school committee, if possible, because everybody works hard to ensure the district is funded, managed, and informed. So if that's something you're interested in, we would love that. If not, then no worries. So one little topic that I wanted to just give a couple of things on is NHS administration is going to be creating a new cellphone policy as we head into the 2025 academic school year, or 2025, 2026 academic school year. There's no question that cellphones are viewed as a significant disruption to learning time. So a new policy will be created to cut down the distraction of cellphone use and allow students to focus on learning time. As a new policy is created, here are just some of my thoughts as the administration is going to work through that process. So one major advantage is the assistant phones can provide us with assignments. Many of our classes, digital media production, digital photography, require many students to take pictures, photos, and complete tasks on their phones and upload pictures from those. My senior project, along with many others, will show documentation using those, uploading that on the computer, showing, or just going up and showing a picture or whatever we need to do. Additionally, it's a very valuable tool for access and accessibility. Some teachers will say, you know, you can listen to music while working. That helps a lot of students sometimes, makes it easier for activities like cahoots, booklets. Students can quickly scan those QR codes to participate. And a lot of times, if a teacher is giving a lecture or a lesson, they'll say, you know, take a picture of this slideshow or this math problem, or, you know, so you remember to do it for homework, or you remember to study this. So that's another helpful piece of it as well. Additionally, especially right now, we have a lot of communication going on with the winter sports schedule, right? So if a practice is canceled, I know for indoor track, or if it's moved inside, we'll often get messages on our Sports U pages or hear from our coaches. So really, the phones are a very valuable tool to stay connected and communicate, have good communication about practice games or scheduled changes, especially during the winter season. So there's no denying that cellphones are a disruption of learning. There's no denying that, and that's why a policy is being created. So I did try a policy in my English 12 British Literature class that was shared with me from Mr. Fiore. He previously used this when teaching in New York, and I said, you know, why not just try it and see how we like it, see how it feels? We all placed the phones on the right corner of our desk where it was visible to the teacher at all times, which allowed our teacher to monitor that phone use and easily ensure nobody was texting or browsing. And it was very effective because the teacher could see, the student knew exactly where their phone was, therefore, they felt comfortable. So it was very well-received by both students and teachers in that room. So by allowing the students to keep their phones nearby, but where they can be seen, there's a balance between a responsible use as well as minimizing the distractions. Sometimes they'll, some teachers will say, you know, put it in your backpack for now. The desk policy stops that issue of anybody pretending to reach for something else or grabbing anything else or trying to sneak on their phone to look at something. And the same thing with the phone pouch pockets. If those are purchased for the future, you know, I'm pretty sure many students will put a fake phone or a dummy phone in those, creating a significant amount of work for administrators. So those are just some brief thoughts on the topic, and I know that a policy needs to be created to minimize phone use. Students need to learn the necessary control with the use, as it's an accountability tool for college and future jobs. And I know I did learn from Mr. Fiore that a committee will develop a phone use policy that'll be formed and ready to meet in the beginning of February or March. And as a policy is created, I'm very confident in Mr. Fiore, Mr. McCluskey, and the administration at the high school to have a policy that will be effective for the faculty, parents, students, everyone will communicate to really find a common ground and make that happen. So those are just my thoughts as we head into the new year with the cellphones. And just because Mrs. McNeese asked last time, I did receive some more college acceptances. URI, Rhode Island College, Roger Williams, and Bryant, and I am happy to announce that I'll be going to URI for communications next year, so I'm really excited about that.
Go Rams!
Go Rams, yes. Thank you. So with that, I'm open to any questions on what's going on at the high school, the exams, the phone policy.
I don't have a question, just a comment. So as always, very well done, very succinct, nice elaboration. Thank you for taking the time to generate such a thoughtful response and sharing your opinion. We appreciate that, and a great delivery, as always. And a big congratulations on the multiple college acceptances. And I'm sure that feels wonderful that you have already decided where you're going to go, and you can coast through senior year and enjoy the rest of senior year. So that, no questions from me, just comments. Any other, any questions or comments from any school committee members, from Marco?
I just had one question on the midterms. Do you know if they're going to be finals in the electives?
I do not know that yet. I know administration will definitely create that final schedule as we approach April and May. I would think it would run similar to midterms, but honestly, I'm not too sure.
And I also want to add, Mike, thanks for your thoughts on the cellphone policy, because eventually it gets to our Subcommittee on Policy, and I'm going to hold on to your comments for that time.
Thank you. Yeah, this was definitely the most difficult report to put together so far. I really had to collect data from everybody, teachers, students, figure out something that works. It's a very tough topic, especially at the high school. So I just wanted to provide any thoughts I can that'll help you guys out and admin for the future.
All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, so we are on to school committee reports. So before we jump in, what members have a report to give, and we can kind of figure out the order? So CJ has one. Do one of you want to, Buildings and Grounds met, right? Do one of you? Dave's going to give that. CJ, I can give the Special Education Advisory. Okay. And then Diane, do you want to share out from School Committee 101 or anything? Okay. Well, why don't we just go down in a row there? If you're ready, Dave, otherwise we can start at the other end. Okay, no problem. CJ, would you like to go first and give your Subcommittee report? Okay.
All righty. So this is for the Recreation Advisory Board. It met on January 13th. Now, do you want me to read the entire thing? Sorry, this is my first.
That's okay.
My first reading.
And it's really just highlights, yeah. Because normally, we don't get formal minutes from a group, and so if you attended the meeting yourself, or if another member gave you an update, it's really just a shout-out and kind of like highlights, like the Subcommittee talked about this, and future discussions are going to revolve around that.
Great.
So very informal, high-level highlights.
Oh, right.
Yep.
So they discussed about what some of the happenings for the wintertime, like the Festival of Lights, the Holiday Fair, the Lions Club, Christmas Dinner, the Polar Plunge, and they all went very successfully. Some of the date summer events for the food trucks, music concerts, and music on the beach, and the Philharmonic will be coming up, and they'll be set up and currently, and then put out, and we'll put them out on social media also. There was talk about Phase One and Two of the new playground equipment for Christopher Row. And then they talked about how that's normally inspected every two years, so it's not going to be inspected this year. And since we didn't get much snow, the winter conditions on the beach are pretty good. So that was basically in terms of that, and then we'll get the calendar going shortly up, and then we'll get that all out to everybody. That was a wrap-up on that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
And I already forgot, are you doing Buildings and Grounds or is Dave? Okay, all right. Okay. So CJ and I attended the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting. It was very well-attended, lots of parents, staff member there, Dr. Denton there, of course, and it was a really great discussion, talking about what are some of the things that the committee wants to do, how do they want to outreach to parents and families, how can they better support them? So we kind of ended the meeting with little subgroups to possibly put together a staff and a parent survey. So Dr. Denton is running point on that with one of the members, and I'm kind of looping in on that as well. And then another Subcommittee is hoping to plan some type of an event just to showcase and celebrate and spotlight, and CJ's on that Subcommittee. So more to come on what that event will be and when it'll take place, and more to come from Dr. Denton about whether the committee is going to do a survey after the Survey Works window closes, you know, at the end of the school year, or kind of TBD on that. But great meeting, great turnout. Diane?
Yes, on Saturday, January 18th, CJ, David and I attended the Rhode Island Association of School Committees session called School Committee 101. And it's an opportunity for school committees to learn or be refreshed on important topics to school committee members, such as the Open Meetings Act, the Access to Public Records, ethics rulings in the state. And we heard from various agencies that gave us updates on all those. And the last session was on roles and responsibilities of school committee members. So it's a very helpful session that the re-ask puts on after every election.
Great, thank you. Dave?
Sure. So on January 7th, I attended a Building and Grounds Committee budget meeting where we discussed the, essentially, the draft budget for the year, preliminary budget. The good news is there's, it was, I'm going to say this in a good way, it was a bit boring, where there's no excitement. We don't want excitement in a budget meeting. And so it was in line with what we have seen from a budget ask from a previous year. One of the items discussed is actually on our agenda today, so that is, we'll talk about that in a little bit, purchase of a new minibus for the district.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, we are on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Cummings?
Great, thank you, Tammy. So you all covered so many of the things I was going to mention, but so I will keep it brief. So two things. One, we are in the midst of our budget development, and so that is going strong. It's a really busy time of year for us to be thinking about what's happening in the future. It is a time where we also kind of look at our priorities, we look at our school committee goals, and we try to make sure that our budget is aligned with the goals of the school committee. And so as this process unfolds, I just want to say to the community, we welcome your input. We hopefully and strongly encourage you to come to our budget workshops. I think those are really important times for people to be able to ask questions and to get involved in the budget process, and those are coming up in late February and early March. We did get a early preview of our state aid from the Governor's Budget. Unfortunately, our allocation of state aid did get cut about $300,000, and so that's certainly going to require some adjusting within our local budget to accommodate that cut. To bill, but we are confident that, A, Karen does a really great job, and our principals do a great job of thinking through things, so we'll hash that out as we go through the budget process. I really appreciate talking about the cellphone policy. So, you know, as Marco was saying, we are going to be working on a cellphone policy. It's actually going to be not just for the high school, it is going to be district-wide. So Connor is one of the chairs that is helping us to pull together community members, students, teachers, to really have a group approach so that we have the best ideas going and drafting a policy. Once we do have, you know, a potential draft policy, we'll bring it to the policy committee of the school committee for a first round of vetting. It would then go to this group, to our school committee, for a first read to get feedback on that. We would go back, make any required revisions, and then for a second read. One thing we are keeping a close eye on is whether the state legislature does anything around cellphones. There have been several states where they have done a statewide cellphone policy. It doesn't prevent us from doing a local one, but we would have to incorporate the requirements of the statewide one. one within our local one. So we're just keeping an eye on that as we go forward. And then finally, you know, sports are in full swing. We have several teams who are doing excellently this year. You know, and so I really do encourage people to go onto our website or onto the Interscholastic Wheat League website to look at the calendars for our sports teams and to get out and root on the Mariners, because we have several teams that are having outstanding seasons this year.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Cummings? All right, thank you. All right. So we are moving along to Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent to approve Consent Agenda Item CA 1B, CA 2A, CA 2B, and CA 2C?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. On to the budget report. Karen?
Good evening. Expenditures for the six months ended December 31st, 2024, total $13,886,497. And that's 35.48% of our budget. Expenditures and encumbrances total $30,013,418. And that's 81.37% of our budget.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Karen? All right, thank you. All right, we're on to School Committee Business. Item number one, is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent and the Director of Finance and Administration to approve the purchase of a mini-school bus with a handicap lift from DeVivo Bus Sales at a cost of $111,300?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hi, Steve.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Happy New Year. So this is a, is a minibus with wheelchair lift. The fleet that we have is aging. It's, our oldest is a 2017. We have three on the road right now. This is being purchased because we don't have a backup. So last week, we had one breakdown with a transmission issue, and we had to scramble to work things out. And fortunately, we were able to do that. But this vehicle would be ordered now, and we would expect it in September, hopefully sooner, but it looks like September at this point. So what we'd do is we'd take the new bus, put it in service, take the oldest bus, and leave it as the spare. Most of the buses over, over 120,000 miles, they're gas engine buses, so.
So Steve, I think you mentioned this before when we were talking about buses maybe a few years ago. The lead time is still this long? Has it gotten any shorter?
It, it varies. What, you know, they have some in stock that really don't fit our need. So we, they're a custom, custom order. So they, they give you a six-month window. Delivery's been four, about four months.
Right. And we're being proactive with this, because we're not in desperate need of it, but it'd be really-
It could be tomorrow.
That, that's, that's the point.
You know, that's, that's, that's what makes me nervous, is that we don't-
Reasonably so.
We don't have a spare.
Thank you.
Was the sourcing of the bus done through, or the financing going to be done through a master price agreement?
It's a master price agreement. It's, actually, it's a collaborative purchase through US Communities. So I believe that's what I put on there. It's either that or MHTC. The vendor that we were getting the bus from deals with both collaboratives. So the pricing's the same.
Thank you. Well, and as always, we appreciate you being proactive and putting this in the long-term capital plan. I know during budget season, you know, you've often given us the chart of, here's the number of buses in the fleet, here's the age, here's the mileage, here's that replacement plan, so we don't end up in a situation where we can't transport students because the bus that was X number of years old is broken, and so is the spare, and so is the whatever. So, so thanks for being proactive. We appreciate that.
Happy to be.
Any other questions for Steve before we take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have one more business item tonight. It is not a voting item, so we don't need to move a motion. It is a discussion, and we'll kind of talk this over, give feedback to Pete, and then we will put this on the February School Committee Agenda as a voting item. So believe it or not, this is the discussion for next year's school calendar, 25, 26. And Pete, we appreciate you getting this ready for us to consider in January. And so in your packet, the School Committee, you have three different documents. One is a draft of the RIDE Recommended School Calendar, and then Pete put in like, kind of like a version one, version two, that are very similar, little discrepancies. So Pete, if you can kind of give us an overview and direct us to whatever handout you want us to look at of those three handouts.
Sure. So why don't we begin with the RIDE Recommended Calendar? So this is a practice ride started a few years ago during the pandemic to try to align school system vacations as much as possible to make it easier on families. And so you will note that the RIDE Recommended Calendar, it's a recommendation, right? So you don't have to follow it strictly, but it certainly helps us stay aligned with neighboring districts in terms of families. And we have a number of out-of-district students who, you know, come to near or against a high school, so it helps to be aligned with neighboring districts. So the two versions that you have in front of you, the ma, there's one major difference that I, that I will put out there for your consideration. If you look at the December break, the holiday break, there's really a choice. The RIDE Recommended Calendar recommends that you have school on Monday, the 22nd, and Tuesday, the 23rd. And then the holiday break would begin on Wednesday, the 24th, and continue through January 2nd. I would say that the difference between the two versions that you have in front of you, the major difference is whether to have school on the 22nd and 23rd of December or not, right? And so you would either have a full two-week break, should you choose to not have school on the 22nd and 23rd, or you would, could have school on those two days. I wouldn't recommend to you having it just for one day, but for two days, it's a possibility. And then return back to, to school on the 5th. The, the ending of school day is still relatively close to one another. You know, should you choose to have school on the 22nd and the 23rd, we would be able to fit in a PD day in March, and then still be able to theoretically be out before Juneteenth, before June 19th, which is Friday. Should you choose not to have school on the 22nd and 23rd, we would use that PD day in a different way. We have some contractual ways that we can do that with after-school hours and that type of thing that we would be able to do. Because I don't want to try, I would prefer not to schedule school to go beyond the 19th before any emergency closing days. So if you have any specific questions about the calendar, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone, it's a lot to think about because they're so similar. Like sometimes when they're very different, it's-
Right, it really comes down to-
Easier to have an opinion about, oh, two-day February break versus five-day, there's, like, these are so close.
It really comes down to the major difference that I will tell you is the Christmas break, is the holiday break.
Yes.
Do you want a two-week holiday break and not go to school on the 22nd and 23rd, get out a day later, right, in June? Or do you want to have school on the 22nd and the 23rd and get out, you know, a little bit closer to the 19th?
I think you're going to have staff and parents say two different things for the days before Christmas.
Right, for sure.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Pete. If there was like, one day, two, that'd be easier choice, but two, there's a little more wiggle room as well.
Right. I, I will just say to you, right, is that I am very cognizant of, for many of our families who have young children, those will be workdays for many parents, right? And so that does, you know, sometimes put a burden on families, right, if they have to find childcare for those days, right? So that's why we like to do this calendar far enough in advance so that people can find childcare if they need it, if they have workdays on those days, but school's not in session.
I don't have a strong opinion either way. That is interesting, though, because sometimes people are so focused on, okay, closing the building and the heat and the germs and the deep cleaning, and what if people travel, and what if, you know, we don't have enough substitute teachers, like, like people think of that. But thinking about the young families that you can't leave your six- and seven-year-old home alone, I mean, it's, so if those are no-school days, that could really put a financial burden on parents that have to work, which is, you know, December 22nd and 23rd, so.
This year, we did have the 23rd off, because it was just the Monday.
So it's interesting. So I would say to the committee, we really should take a vote in February. Like, we shouldn't talk it over in February and then push it to March, because one way or another, people need to know, you know, just in advance, whether they're planning a trip to see family, or whether they know they're going to have to arrange for daycare, whether the local, you know, YMCA or Recreation Department or whoever does like, school-age programs, so they can start planning, like, oh, boy, Narragansett is closed on the 22nd and the 23rd, we should put together some full-day programming that parents can access for daycare, like, stuff like that. So, you know, talk to people and, and, you know, reach out to Pete if you have any questions, but let's try to come back in February with a, you know, not pushing it to March, is what I would say.
The only other thing I would add is that, you know, there are some districts that start before Labor Day. We've heard clearly from the community that in Narragansett, we need to start after Labor Day, so we do arrange the calendars accordingly.
Yeah, that's something, can sit, been very consistent throughout the years. Even at the expense of extending the school year a little bit, parents tend to really like that after Labor Day.
And we don't have to close for a primary day or an election day, so it's, literally, we're just trying to figure out the two days before the holiday break, which translates to a swing of one day in June. So either, you know, before any weather cancellations, June 17th or June 18th, end of the school year. So it's really close.
In the spirit of alignment with other districts, how many districts, or do you say it's common that the districts just follow the RIDE guidance?
It is pretty common, yes. There are always local permutations, right?
We have one of those.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
I mean, that, you know, that's an interesting comment, Dave. Like, when I'm really split, when in doubt, you know, RIDE has put some thought into making a calendar, and if more districts are wrestling with this decision, and when in doubt, if you go with what RIDE has recommended, I mean, that kind of addresses the, well, what about the parents that have to work those days? And this is kind of what RIDE is saying, hey, you know what, if all of you did this, that would be helpful for parents who work, and kids that are in CTE programs in other districts, and transportation costs and so forth, so.
Right. Typically, that becomes a problem if we have a school day when the rest of the state is off, right? It's for high school students. You know, if we are off, but their home district is in session, that's not usually a burden on parents, because they just are not coming to school. And that's also true of our staff, right? So again, lots of our staff have school-aged children, that if their district is not in session and we are in session, that can be hard for staff for childcare as well.
And what's tricky is all the school committees are on the same timeline, so people are discussing and voting on this at January or February and sometimes March. So we don't have, oh, here's what 15 districts are doing, we're all talking about it at the same time. Okay. So it's not a voting item. Any, any other comments that people from the School Committee want to share, questions or anything? Diane?
I have a question on, before school starts with the Professional Development Days, I noticed on, on calendar number two, that it starts Friday, whereas on calendar one, they're kept together in, in one week, the 25th to the 29th. So I was just curious, it would seem to me it'd be better to keep it together as opposed to breaking that up over the weekend. But I know that you and Gail, you know, should have the final say on, on what works best.
We do, we do. So we are kind of going back and forth on that. So those days are a bit preliminary for this discussion. We're kind of figuring out our PD days from the beginning. We do typically have our new teachers come in for those first two days, and so it does work really well to have them in on a Friday, let them really think about it, and then come back on Monday.
Hopefully, they come back.
Right, hopefully, they come back on Monday.
And then a second question. Have we checked with the Ryan Center to see if our graduation date, which seems to be the same on each calendar of June 11th, is available?
Yes, Chris has checked with them.
Yes, okay. And then just a comment. I noticed, you know, the, the second Monday in October is always kind of a question mark on what different states are, are calling that holiday now. And I noticed we have down Indigenous Peoples' Day, no school. So I was just curious if, if that had been an official change with Rhode Island and what other states were doing. So I came across a survey or a report from the Pew Research Center, which surveyed all 50 states on how they're naming that holiday now. And it was interesting that Rhode Island and one other state are combining both. So they say we celebrate both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. And those are the only two states that have solved it or come to that conclusion. So I just wanted to make sure that we're in line with what our state's doing.
Absolutely. We'll make sure that is labeled correctly.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, all right. Are there any communications that anyone wants to mention? Okay, then we are back here in February for our regular business meeting, February 12th at 7:00. And that is a very important meeting, because Dr. Cummings is going to present next year's school budget to us. That'll be our first comprehensive look at that. And then we'll have our budget workshops after that. So I know, I'm confident that Lauren will be able to promote, you know, those couple important School Committee meetings, the February meeting where Pete is presenting our budget workshops, and then, of course, when Pete presents to the Town Council, another important, kind of save the date, so. All right. Yes, Diane?
I just had one question, Melissa, if you don't mind. On the, on your report where you talked about the Washington County Coalition and Thunder Mist, our grant with, that's been for three years. And my question is, is that still ongoing? Is it renewable, or is there a certain time period for that grant?
Okay, there it goes. So we, we received an extension for two years. So we're in our first year of the extension. And so what I wrote about in the report is they're now doing a new grant primarily for the East Bay, but they really thought that having our Narragansett voice as part of their introduction and rollout of their grant would give confidence to both medical facilities and schools that partnerships can exist. And I've already had a couple of people reach out to me to get some advice on writing their grants. So I was honored to do that for the Von Vieren Foundation.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Anything else before we close? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn at 7:54?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?